We'll now move to our consent agenda. The consent agenda is presented as items one through seven that we will take as one block vote. Each item will be read and the council will entertain one motion and one vote on these consent items. Is there any member of the body that would like items one through seven to the regular agenda? If so, please say so. Does there any member of the public here to speak on behalf of item one through seven? If so, we'll be having her move down. Seeing none. Mr. Corrigan, please read the items.
Item number one approves for payment of bills. Item two approves for minutes from the July 3rd, 2023 meeting. Item three is resolution number 7028-23, which approves an alcohol license for Asian Food Store Corp. doing business as Young Thai Takeout located at 546 Highway 280, Suite 9, Hoover, Alabama for the sale of 020 Restaurant Retail Liquor. Item number four, resolution 7032-23 approves an alcohol license for Golden City Jang doing business as Ippen Ramen located at 3000 Meadow Lake Drive, Suite 113, Hoover, Alabama for the sale of 020 Restaurant Retail Liquor. Item five, resolution 7029-23 authorizes Mayor Brocado to enter into an agreement with the Kaba Solid Waste Authority to allow the city to opt in to the authority's fuel cost savings rebate as shown on exhibit one of the resolution. Item number six, resolution 7034-23 authorizes the approval of a financial manual for the city of Hoover. And item seven, resolution 7033-23 authorizes Mayor Brocado to enter into an agreement with Robert Jaeger for special projects and to serve as city treasurer effective October 1st, 2023.
Mr. President, I move for approval of consent agenda.
Second. Have a motion and second for approval of all items on the consent agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. The ayes have it, the motion carries. Well, now move to the regular agenda. Beginning about number eight, ordinance number 23-2619.
This ordinance amends section 18 of the franchise agreement between the city of Hoover, Alabama and MCI Metro Access Transmission Services LLC doing business as Verizon Access Transmission Services to allow for the installation of a fabric mesh interduct inside the existing franchisee-owned two-inch wide HPE conduit and placed by secondary two-inch HPPE.
Mr. President, I move for adoption of ordinance number 23-2619.
Second. Have a motion and second for adoption of ordinance. Mr. Cope, if you can, I'd like you to have something to share.
No, everything's the same as the first reading. I was just doing a case you had a question.
Very good. Any member of the body have a question or comment for Mr. Cope?
Sure.
Any member of the public here to speak on behalf of the ordinance? Adam Burke, please call the room.
Mr. Prezy?
Aye.
Mr. Sweeney?
Aye.
Mr. Abber?
Aye.
Mr. Murphy?
Aye.
Dr. Middleworks?
Aye.
Mr. McLean?
Aye.
Mr. Lyra?
Aye. The votes seven eyes and zero nays. Motion carries and the ordinance is adopted. Item number nine is ordinance number 23-2620. Mr. Corrigan.
This ordinance amends chapter six, article one, section six dash two point eight of the municipal code to insert R 402.4.1.2, testing and table R 405.4.2, subparagraph one, specifications for standard reference and proposed designs.
Mr. President, I move for adoption of ordinance number 23-2620.
Second. Have a motion and second for adoption. Any questions or comments from the body on this ordinance? Any member of the public here like to speak on behalf of the ordinance before we vote? Seeing none. Madam Burke, please call the room.
Mr. Prezy?
Aye.
Mr. Sweeney?
Aye.
Mr. Abber?
Aye.
Mr. Murphy?
Aye.
Dr. Middleworks?
Aye.
Mr. McLean?
Aye.
Mr. Lyra?
Aye. Seven eyes and zero nays. The motion carries and the ordinance is adopted. Item number 10 is resolution 7008-23. Mr. Corrigan.
This resolution grants conditional use approval for a cosmetology school on the property located at 2169 Rocky Ridge Road, Hoover, Alabama pursuant to the conditions set forth in exhibit two to the resolution.
Mr. President, I move to approve resolution number 7008-23.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments for Mr. Martin tonight for the body? Hearing none. Any comments from the audience tonight? Seeing none. We have a motion and a second for approval. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. The motion carries. Item number 11, resolution number 7009-23.
This resolution grants conditional use approval for a tattoo studio on property located at 3133 Lorna Road, Suite 103, Hoover, Alabama.
Mr. President, I move to approve resolution number 7009-23.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments from the body tonight? Comments from the public? Mr. Stifler. You'll come and give us your name and address, please, or you'll be recognized for three minutes.
Thank you. My name is Lorna Stifler. I represent Iowa Properties, 3141 Lorna Road. You know, we've had that property for about 15 years. I've seen a lot of things on Lorna Road over that timeframe. I can tell you that there's nothing more positive than is going on there right now. There are, you know, buildings there that are remodeling, homes in the neighborhood are remodeling. You know, we currently have, you know, a doctor's office, accounting firm as our tenants in our building. The sidewalk, I've never seen people use the sidewalk like they do today. See kids out there from time to time. The subject property, as you know, you know, is, you know, connected to residential on two sides, within a quarter mile of the school. Also has a bus stop on the property. You know, I just believe that Lorna is moving in a super positive direction and I would like to just, you know, continue to see that with the choices we make with special conditions. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Stifler. I know the advocate is here as well. If you'd like an opportunity to speak, you're more than welcome to. We could also get your name and address, sir. We'd be happy to recognize you.
My name is Matthew Crane. I'm the owner of State Gold Tattoo. I, you know, I respect your, you know, concerns, but we are not anything that would bring anything negative to Hoover anywhere else. We try to be a positive thing in everything that we do, my whole team of both shops. That's just how we work. We always safe place for children, for women, even for men should they need it. I know there's a stigma, you know, but we're not the norm. And we really tried to get away from what the norm is. So I'm not trying, and we're not, you know, we're not new. I've been in this business 24 years off and on. I'm a business owner now of almost nine years. And we're just trying to remove or, excuse me, relocate our south side location to a safer area for my team, for my clients. It's better parking, even if nothing changed financially, just the rent itself is cheaper. So it's a win-win all the way around. Just from the last time I saw you, the first time meeting, in that time, there has been one of the little more, I guess, unsafe homeless men came up to the shop, dropped everything he had on. I had to have the girls lock the door. I wasn't there. The cops did not come. We called them. Sometimes they show up, sometimes they don't. So we're not, we don't have any of those problems at my fault and their location, just in south side. So this is a move that I need, my team needs, my family needs, and I understand the concerns, but, you know, we're not the danger. We're not what you may think. I'm not talking to you guys, you know, specifically, but sorry. So come get a tattoo. That's all I got.
Very good. Thank you, sir. Mr. President, my name...
Yes, sir.
Well, I can't say that I was honestly thrilled to have a tattoo shop located on Lorna Road. I will say that I called around with this gentleman and checked his credentials to check what kind of business person he was. I couldn't find anything negative. And in my research, I actually found very positive news stories on his business after an eye surgery. He spoke about becoming a safe place. So while I'm not thrilled about having a tattoo shop with the stigmas that it carries, I think you are a positive light in that industry. And honestly, this isn't good for my political career, but I have a tattoo. I might have one. And it would be very hypocritical of me to deny you a place of business in this thriving city without myself having it. So good luck.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Corrigan. Any other confessions tonight? So I was just making a comment. Not that much to say. Any, I noticed close by a interest of the neighborhood, not directly inside of it, of public safety. You have any concerns in any other areas with these type of businesses? Your experience chief, talking to just different people, any thoughts on, from a public standpoint, yes and no, just from a public safety standpoint?
Well, I'll say that when this first came up, I did some research myself and called around, talked to police departments where this gentleman has his establishments today. And then again, did not find anything that concerned me after talking to people.
Okay. And I do want to confess, I only have tattoos that have three brands.
We're learning a lot for your heart. Any comments from the public tonight? We have a motion and second for approval. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Nay. The ayes have it and the motion carries. Item number 12 is an item we will consider for immediate consideration. It's ordinance number 23-2622. Mr. Corrigan.
This ordinance amends chapter 11.5, section 11.5 dash 1.1 of the municipal code to exclude the Hoover metropolitan complex from the definition of athletic parks and also amends chapters, chapter 11.5, section 11.5 dash 4E and 11.5 dash 5E to allow for the possession, consumption, and sale of alcoholic beverages at passive or playground parks and preserves if a special event permit from the city has been obtained pursuant to chapter 13, section 13.4 of the municipal code.
Mr. President, I suspend the rules for immediate consideration of this item.
Second. We have a motion and second for suspension of rules for immediate consideration. Madam Burke, please call the room for the motion.
Mr. Prezy?
Aye.
Mr. Sweeney?
Aye.
Mr. Abber?
Aye.
Mr. Murphy?
Aye.
Dr. Middleworks?
Aye.
Mr. McLean?
Aye.
Mr. Lyra?
Aye. The votes seven eyes and zero nays. The motion carries and we will now consider ordinance number 23-2622 for immediate consideration tonight. Mr. Corrigan has read the ordinance. We will now entertain a motion for adoption.
Mr. President, I move for adoption of ordinance number 23-2622.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Ms. Bolt, turn it over to you for any updates on the budget.
Yeah, this was for the, we actually needed one.
She was coming over. I'm sorry.
I just wanted to get set up.
Okay, you go ahead and get set up. One vote, we'll have to change. Any questions or comments from the body on this item? Comments from the public tonight on the ordinance? Seeing none. Madam Burke, you may now call the room.
Mr. Prezy?
Aye.
Mr. Sweeney?
Aye.
Mr. Abber?
Aye.
Mr. Murphy?
Aye.
Dr. Middleworks?
Aye.
Mr. McLean?
Aye.
Mr. Lyra?
Aye. The votes seven eyes and zero nays. The motion carries and the ordinance is adopted. I want to thank Ms. Erin Cobal. She has worked incredibly tirelessly over the last several days to get this done. I think most folks know that the Bham 26.2 marathon is relocated for the city of Birmingham and the city of Hoover next month. And so the reason this needs to be considered tonight is because the event will be held prior to our next regularly scheduled meeting. So we are incredibly excited to have this race that will draw a couple thousand athletes from across the southeast and perhaps around the country to the city of Hoover, Alabama for a marathon. So I expect everyone out there, if not running, cheering on Marathon Day. We're excited to have it here. But Ms. Cobal, thank you so much for all your work on that. Now we'll consider item number 13, ordinance number 23-2623. Mr. Corrigan.
This ordinance approves and adopts a general fund budget, a special revenue fund budget, a capital project fund, and a proprietary fund budget for the city of Hoover for the period beginning October 1st, 2023 through September 30th, 2024.
Before we have a vote for immediate consideration, Mr. Corrigan, will we allow Ms. Bolt to make her presentation and consider a motion and then discussion? Thank you, Ms. Bolt.
So we already had our original budget presentation and of course, we usually allow a couple of weeks between council meetings to allow for any changes or considerations of other things. So basically what we have tonight are council changes. Just to recap how the budget process works, we start our budget process by giving each department the same amount that they were given from the previous year's original budget, less any one-time items. This is for operating numbers. Then we, the mayor and the city staff meet and work together to kind of either decide or reject some of those items. Then we have hearings with the city council and then it's presented with the budget presentation as we did at our last council meeting. So these are the council changes. We have increased the COLA from 1.5 to 2%. We have upgraded our EMS director from 15 to 17. Convert open dispatch position that is a no cost to the city. A grade increase for our behavioral specialist, behavioral specialist, an increase for fire admin assistant to grade 10, a one grade increase for executive secretary, an additional position for the clerk's office, a one grade increase for six magistrates, and two grade increase for corporal four. And those are four positions. So that total is $555,000. We also have additional funds for legal fees of $300,000 and then a capital line item of $5,000 for rec center benches and seating around the pool. So that gives a total of the additional adds of $860,000. So some future council considerations, an additional GIS technician for engineering, two additional fire medics, those are to be placed for a budget amendment list, I think, pending discussion among council. There are three finance position grade increases being held for mid-year review. The items for the 10 to budget amendment are possible is $313,000 and the hold for mid-year review is $27,000, which gives a $340,000. And the increase for the finance is a revenue neutral as those would be paid for a reduction in other expenditures such as one upgrade that is not going to take place in overtime. So with those types of considerations and the additional adds, and as an idea, just to make this easier, I broke this down into two separate pages, just to make it a little bit easier. So it shows you our total revenues. If you look just at the general fund, just what we typically focus on is 159 million in revenue. That is with the 4% increase in growth that we typically budget by, that is using our average, looking at 10, 15, and 20 years, look back. Our expenditures, our total operating and debt and education expenditures are at 144 And then the rest of the page, again, just to make it a little bit easier, our special items and transfers out, and that's transferred out to other funds is, gives us a total budget of 156.5 million. So that net change in fund balance, as you will see, that's what we always look at, is what do we have left over? That is 2.3. And I know on the agenda, we're talking about the grocery tax. Our bill to get to that will take place in FY24 was to be, I mean FY25 was to be about 2.5 million, so we're just shy of making that about $200,000. So with an estimate of our fund balance beginning of the year, again, I was very conservative of what we were going to finish with because we've done a lot of budget amendments. I know our last financial, we're looking at about 36 million in our fund balance add or addition. But again, we've done a lot of budget amendments, so taking some of those into consideration. And also the 9 million that we're sweeping to capital, I kind of just did another estimate of about 9 million more, just to be very conservative where we may end FY23. So with that, our fund balance at the beginning of the year estimate would be 88 million and then at the end of the year by adding the 2.3 would be at 91 million. So again, talking about our budget stabilization fund, this is the fund that we have set up for, to be restricted just for emergencies. In FY23, we were able to add about 1.6. So you can see the interest that we have grown in that to be 1.7 since we invested that. FY24, what we are budgeting to transfer is 1.7. Again, I hope that will be invested in, again, you know, earn the same type of earnings. And then I know Ms. Driver actually asked for this, so I made it a little bit prettier and a little bit easier to read. So just looking at the proposed operating expenses by department, if you look at, the blue is FY23, what we did in the revised budget, and then what's in orange is the FY24 proposed budget. So pretty level. Although there was, if you look at our overall budget, operating by operating expenses, including personnel, we did grow about 10%, which is a little bit higher, but there is a lot of one-time items requested in that operating budget. The personnel budget actually didn't grow that much. So any questions?
Any questions from Ms. Bolt, the body? I want to acknowledge Chairman Posey, once again, who's done outstanding job of leading the conversation on this budget. I think I say it every year, but it's true that this is the most important vote we as a body take each year. It's one of the most important tasks the mayor and his staff undertake each year in moving up this budget. It's one, I've often said, there's never a perfect budget, but certainly one that maintains our conservative, fiscal conservative values. So I think this one meets those needs. Again, it will not be perfect. It will require amendments from time to time, hopefully few and far between. Mr. Browns, we trust that you'll help us with that. But Mr. Posey, thank you and your leadership in helping get us to this point. Any other comments tonight on the budget? We have a presentation now, so we will entertain a motion for immediate consideration.
Mr. President, I move to suspend rules for immediate consideration of this item.
Second. Have a motion and second for immediate consideration. Madam Burke, please call the room.
Mr. Prezy?
Aye.
Mr. Sweeney?
Aye.
Mr. Abber?
Aye.
Mr. Murphy?
Aye.
Dr. Middleworks?
Aye.
Mr. McLean?
Aye.
Mr. Lyra?
Aye. Seven eyes and zero nays. The motion carries. We will now consider ordinance number 23-2623. Mr. Corrigan has read the ordinance. We will now entertain a motion to accept.
Mr. President, I move for adoption of ordinance number 23-2623.
Second. Have a motion and a second for adoption. Any comments from the body tonight?
Yes, Mr. President, I would add for you guys, your funding was in the budget, so it was not a council add. I see this budget passing unanimously and I look forward to hearing some announcements from those corporate partners as soon as possible.
Any other comments tonight? Any comments from the public tonight before we vote? Seeing none. Madam Burke, please call the room.
Mr. Prezy?
Aye.
Mr. Sweeney?
Aye.
Mr. Abber?
Aye.
Mr. Murphy?
Aye.
Dr. Middleworks?
Aye.
Mr. McLean?
Aye.
Mr. Lyra?
Aye. Seven eyes and zero nays. The motion carries. The ordinance is adopted. The budget is passed. Mayor, congratulations. We'll now consider two first readings. No vote will be taken on either of these items tonight. We will hear from the ordinance and the resolution and the ordinance for a potential vote in our next meeting in early October. For our first reading, item number 14, resolution 7027-23. Mr. Corrigan.
This resolution declares a leave under transportation nuisance at 2368 Chapel Road and 1809 River Chase Drive and directs the abatement of such nuisance pursuant to Alabama law, public hearing is set for October 2nd, 2023.
Item number 15, ordinance 23-2624. Mr. Corrigan.
This ordinance amends chapter 14, article two, section 14 dash 16 of the municipal code to reduce the tax on groceries by 0.5% in public hearings set for October 2nd, 2023.
We will have second readings and public hearings at the first meeting of October for potential vote on those items. Any general comments from the council tonight? Any comments tonight from the members of the public? Yes, sir. If you'd like to come down and give us your name and address, please, you'll be recognized for three minutes. Yes.
My name is Jerome Conklin and I am a citizen, been a resident and own property in the city of Hoover for 15 years. I'm very disappointed with our garbage service and waste. In the month of August, our neighborhood has had three, almost, I think, four missed pickups. In the month of September, and today is the 18th, we've had two missed pickups already in the month of September. Today is September 18th, 2023, and I'm not confident when I return home that my trash would have been picked up by AmWaste. My family and I are very concerned. I would like the city of Hoover, the council, the mayor to really address the problem with AmWaste. I've used Hoover Connect, I've used the Civic Plus Click Fix app to document all the times that this has happened. It seems nothing has been done to me, to our family, to our neighborhood. I see several of my other neighbors have also applied also in the app. I've noticed that. I know Hoover's saving a lot of money using this process. I remember when this was set up, if I remember correctly, I think the city is saving at least $900,000 to a billion dollars by using the Hoover Connect compared to what the city would have to pay. But what troubles me, my family, our neighborhood, is that AmWaste don't have as much garbage to pick up. We only have two days to pick up compared to three that we had before this Hoover Connect was set up and they can't keep up. So I'm just saying that I would please like you all to consider addressing AmWaste. They're not doing a very good job.
Sir, if I may, I'm the chair of the public works committee.
Yes, sir.
For the council.
Yes, sir.
So last week, I met with, I'm going to take that back, a week ago, we had a city staff member who is the chair of the Kaba Waste Solid, Kaba Waste Solid, no, Kaba Solid Waste Authority, I'm going to get that right. They had a meeting two Thursdays ago. At that meeting, he pulled aside the AmWaste representative and explained our concerns there. This past week, I met with city staff, our city clerk, our representative to Waste Authority, and our legal counsel. We recognize, while AmWaste, since taking over, I think, has provided excellent service, we recognize in the past few months, there has been a substantial uptick in complaints. There are some reasons behind that that AmWaste provided to us. I can say that they went through a leadership change because of it. They had some staff members leave that were normal route drivers and supervisors for our city and that hurt them. After the leadership change, I understand that those staff members, some of them have returned. They have went on a hiring spree to hire more personnel. There are some staff shortages in that industry and it's very hard to get people to work in that industry. With that said, they are committed to getting those people on board and to correcting the mistakes. What they did ask is, they are hiring new route drivers. Those routes are hard. I have actually ridden on one of those routes and I was impressed by how much they cover in one day. So I'm saying that because we will have to have some patience on these new drivers because it's going to take them a while to understand the route. There will be misses. But I applaud you for continually using my Hoover Connect app. There will be misses, but I applaud you for continually using my Hoover Connect app, because that gives us the law, goes on record, and we have informed AmWaste that we have a provision within our contract that if they miss service, and if that is not corrected within twenty-four hours, they can be fined. And we are prepared to start initiating those fines if the level of service is not what our residents and city of Hoover expects. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can we get your address, please, sir?
I'm sorry. I, I thought I didn't, I'm sorry. My, my name is, like I said, Jerome Cockburn. My address is nineteen forty-five Shady Woods Drive, and the zip code is three-five-two-four.
Very good. Thank you for your attendance and your words. Thank you. Anybody else who'd like to speak? Shelby County Commissioner Jeff Brumow is with us tonight. It's always a pleasure to have you here to attend to this.
Mr. President, I know you all have had a long meeting tonight. I wanted to thank you both as a Hoover resident. I'm Jeff Brumow, four-oh-four Rock Ward, Miami. I'm a member of the Shelby County Commission. I want to let you know, we passed our budget this past commission meeting, about an eighty-four million dollar budget. Shelby County is one of the only counties in the, in the state of Alabama, if not the only county, with no long-term debt. So there is no debt payments for Shelby County. I mean, recently voted for a twenty-eight million dollar expansion of the Shelby County Jail to provide for mental health and medical wards at the Shelby County Jail to update that. In addition, and I know Chief Durs will like to hear this, the sheriff led the way with the commission to ask for about five-hundred thousand dollars in technology upgrades for the Shelby County Sheriff's Office, which includes fifty new flock cameras, which will feed into the system that is used by not only Shelby County, its municipality, but also Hoover and the greater metro area. Shelby County looks forward and always appreciates the City of Hoover and working together. Most of my district is in the City of Hoover, so I, I try to come as, as often as I can, and I'm happy to say that I just recently drove past Veterans Park, and the new pickleball courts look like they're underway up there. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Anyone else? Thank you for your attendance. Reiter.